Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 14, 2021, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. I will call it the order at this time. Adjustments to the agenda?
We have two. We'd like to add John Jones to Boards and Commissions. He'd like to speak to you about...
I just want to give a brief update.
Wyndham Regional Commission?
Yeah, once we started, I attended a couple of meetings. I just want to forecast a couple of things for the Select Board.
And we have a request from our town clerk about a contractual matter.
Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda? Comments in the public? Okay, thank you, moving on. Acceptance of minutes, June 23.
I'll approve the minutes as well.
Second half?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 23, 2021, has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Minutes are adopted for June 23. Also, we will move to July 8, 2021 minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as printed.
Motion has been moved to approve the minutes for July 28, 2021. Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Sorry?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Who is that?
Nate Stoddard.
Hi Nate, go ahead, shoot.
So I don't know if this is a question prudent to your minutes agenda now or other business or what. It's minutes related. What is your preference? I do.
Shoot.
Okay. Look back on a few meetings that I'd missed. Watched some meetings on Fact TV, read some minutes. I'm confused and I couldn't pull them up right now. It was whatever the meeting was when the original BACO purchase motion was made. I believe Craig made a motion to purchase it for $93,150. The minutes reflect $93,500. So that's my further question about minutes in general. The minutes of June 23, and I understand minutes, trust me. They're to reflect the basic gist of the conversation. But the minutes of the 23 did reflect or mention conversations had by a few speakers from the audience. There was one gentleman that was speaking on behalf of the road crew. No mention of who he was. There's no mention of the other options that were discussed. There's no mention of Craig's preferences that he strongly posed in conversation in the minutes. And it just seems like we're minimizing the minutes. I mean, we didn't identify any speakers in the written minutes. I had no idea who spoke. There was a woman that spoke late in that conversation. No, I've no mention of who she was. So I think some cleaning up of our minutes might be prudent here. I realize that that initial vote is probably null and void now by your July 8 vote, which then makes me ask, is in the written minutes, the purchase price of $95,450 really what was verbally expressed? Because that wasn't on video, so I don't know.
Well, I appreciate, as always, your diligence in these matters. Let me just ask you a question. The minutes for July 23 have been motioned, seconded, and adopted. Is it your intent to reopen the minutes?
No, just suggestion moving forward of having them a little tighter. Especially if we're approving a dollar amount verbally and then seeing a written dollar amount afterwards that differ from each other.
And that is very prudent advice. And we will certainly, as always with your suggestions, take that up for immediate consideration and make sure that we do better to make sure that those things are properly reflected. Again, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for all you do. And I appreciate you allowing us to move on to the July 8 minute and to specifically address now the cost, Nate. Is that your concern?
Hey Nate, it was...
Just to make sure we're dealing with accurate numbers.
Yes, the motion, it was $93,150. I don't know where the $93,500 because later on, we took the $93,150 and added the $2,300 and that's how it came to the $95,450.
Right. So that's... $93,500 written in, the $93,500 written in those minutes.
Incorrect, you're right. No, good pickup. I didn't, I just saw the $93,150 and I didn't, I guess I didn't really focus on.
Thank you, sir, as always. Moving to the July 8 minutes. We have it been motioned, as the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Say no opposition. The minutes for July 8, 2021 are hereby adopted. Thank you. Communication and public comments? Any communication and public comments at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business. Discussion and action. First order of business will be the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, COVID Located Recovery Funds update.
There is no update at this time. I've been checking very regularly to make sure that the money has we've received it so that we can start our process of town hearings, public hearings to kind of spend this money. But at this point, they still have not dispersed the funds.
Thank you. Comment from the board?
Should we start discussions at some point on how we would like to spend that money?
The only thing that they are saying is they're still tweaking what you can use them for. They gave us the four or five basic steps, but they're still in the process of honing in exactly what you can use that money for.
Okay, thanks.
I think that's what's holding up the dispersment, to be honest.
Public comment?
I just wanted to reflect back to Ms. Howells' comment there two meetings ago when it came up to get this committee established, maybe to help with that, to start moving that forward. Because I feel that that money's going to come fast. And the updated version is we have two years to allocate it, but then we have another timeline to spend it. So we have almost a five-year window here, according to the latest version. So I just think having a committee establish to assist with us might be good because I'll speak under Boards. The Wyndham Regional is going to get a lot of money as well that we could leverage to come to the town. So it could get a little convoluted with the money coming in. So just maybe some folks can bring some ideas back for the projects that we're looking at at Wyndham Regional for us. Just a...
Thank you very much. Any more application to this conversation? Or can we, you want to move that to Boards and Commissions? We'll talk about it again.
Boards and Commissions, if appropriate, yes, sir.
Wonderful. Any more comment on American Rescue Plan? Public? Okay, thank you all. Moving on to Hartley Hill Road, private section update, if any.
I talked to Robert Whitberg this morning. He emailed me and asked if I could press legal counsel into stepping up to get this done. I haven't heard anything from them. So we're still waiting for the quit claim deed to be created.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Any comment from the board? No. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, thank you, everyone. Moving on to website renewal update, if any.
We're still progressing. We're kind of in that spot of trying to move over the content from the existing site. We're about 75% complete with that. Hopefully in the next week, we'll be able to get that knocked out and then it'll start working for us in terms of the transfer.
Hello and welcome.
That's good.
Good to see you. Okay, great, thank you. Any comments? Yes?
So just, it reminded me tonight, I went to the website to look at the fund balance policy and it is not on there. So I'm wondering if we can make sure that all of the financial policies are on there. There was a lot of stuff on there, but that was not one of them. I don't know, who would check that for sure?
Thank you, Cynthia, as always. We will certainly follow up on that. Any other public comment?
You know, to listen to Nate, Nate, it's good. We should be asking these people to say who they are so when they're watching the show, we know who they are.
Cynthia Stoddard.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. How many people we have on? Five. Apologize, apologies to the folks on the computer. Good point made by Craig. So please, everyone here in the galley, just please identify yourself when you speak. Thank you. Any further public comment on the website? Seeing none, thank you all. Moving on to Collaborative Finance Processing Manual update. Where are we?
We have not actually worked on the Collaborative Finance Processing Manual, but we are in the process. We're working with NIMRIC to get that next step done with Paul. He is working with Cynthia about a contract for the Assistant Treasurer. So we aren't stagnant. We're moving forward slowly but surely.
I just want to clarify, it's not really, Cynthia Stoddard. I just want to clarify, it's not really a contract for Assistant Treasurer. It's a contract for financial consulting services that includes the caveat that Darlene will be appointed Assistant Treasurer to fill in in his absence for those. So I just want to make sure, I think that was a little confused at one of the meetings that you guys had. It's not just about being Assistant Treasurer. It's a lot more than that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I know, I'm sorry. She's saying one thing, you're saying a contract for Assistant, he's saying contract for Assistant Treasurer, she's saying a contract for financial services. Which is it?
It's going to be what Cynthia Stoddard enunciated. There is a separate contract considering the fact that our strategic partner is NIMRIC. And the work that's being done under that with the strategic partner is a separate contract, separate and apart from her role as Assistant Treasurer. Did I say that correctly?
I think she's being appointed as Assistant Treasurer.
Yes, that's true, but you're talking about...
Working through NIMRIC.
Right, but you're also...
It's just one of the pieces of the contract that we've said that we would be able to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
How's that?
So, now I am confused. We're going to have a contract with NIMRIC. And in that totally separate, we're having to be picking that same person and appointing him as Assistant Town Clerk.
Well, you're actually having a contract with NIMRIC, not with Darlene Kelly.
That's okay.
So she works for NIMRIC. So part of what NIMRIC is offering is that they, that she will, we will agree for her to be Assistant Treasurer. But if Darlene leaves tomorrow, you still have a contract with NIMRIC. And we would do the work.
But the clarification, that when you appoint somebody Assistant, they then have authorization to sign contracts or sign for receiving. So we're contracting to do the service, but we're still appointing that person? Or, I mean, whoever the treasurer is appointing that person, is that right?
That is what you guys have... I presented a proposal three months ago as to the processes and the things that NIMRIC could do for the town. The pieces we thought that the town is missing. I didn't hear anything back about that. And so we just kind of just kept, Darlene kept doing what she does, reconcile bank statements and help where she could. We wanted to more clearly define what our role would be. The next thing I heard was that Darlene was appointed Assistant Treasurer. We really didn't know that was even part of it. At NIMRIC, we like to help the towns with whatever they need. So I talked to Ernie and said, is that okay that they're appointing her Assistant Treasurer? And he said, yes, as long as when she fills in for Paul, that someone else reconciles the bank account. So like if she writes checks or she deposits money, whatever she has to do in his absence, someone else should reconcile the bank account that month because then there's the checks and balances. We have never had a contract where we've put that in there that it's okay that one of our employees is an Assistant Treasurer under this contract. It's new.
You'd say you'd be auditing yourself. You'd be actually monitoring yourself.
Right, so NIMRIC will balance that to make sure that she's not auditing the work that she's doing on the month she has to help fill in.
Okay.
But you have a contract with it. It just so happens that Darlene lives in Westminster and we said, sure, she can be Assistant to make sure that in his absence, somebody's there to sign checks and, you know, upload payroll and he can get paid and all of that. So it's a little unusual of a contract that we have with you guys. I was not aware that there was a vote going on about her being Assistant Treasurer. You didn't know, I mean, Darlene called me and said, I'm supposed to do this? Like what are we, so we worked it out, it's fine. But we put it in the contract for NIMRIC. Now, if Darlene left and she wanted to be Assistant Treasurer on her own, she lives in Westminster, so she could.
The only one...
It's a little bit of a weird...
It matters mostly to Paul, too. He's the person who would actually appoint him as Assistant Treasurer.
Right, I'm not really sure why he even came to you guys to...
That's what I'm questioning now.
Because he's an official, he can appoint who he wants.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I'm questioning. Why would we be involved with it?
I don't know, the answer to that question.
Okay.
What you guys should be involved in is approving the contract with NIMRIC because you're approving the expense to pay for that contract.
I agree with you 100%, yes.
I don't know if the contract's been emailed to Russ yet or not. No, I'm saying now that Darlene's kind of...
Not yet.
Okay. And it outlines everything that we'll do. It just so happens that there's this, it's kind of...
That's what threw me off, why the Select Board was even involved.
So to answer your question, Billy, it's a little bit of both. I mean, I think it's just a financial service contract with an appointee.
But what they voted on was an Assistant, the Select Board voted on an Assistant Treasurer for Paul Harlow. That's in the minutes.
That meeting, there wasn't any mention of NIMRIC or a contract. It was just to hire this person. Well, I understood it.
No, not let the minutes not ever mention it.
Right, right, right.
I totally agree with you. I asked if, I asked Paul if we should be present at that meeting to discuss it and he said it wasn't necessary. The next thing I knew, there was an Assistant Treasurer appointed. So I called him and said, we need to have a contract in our hand if you want us to do all of this other work you're asking us to do that's not really Assistant Treasurer work. It's financial work.
I think he was asking for the Select Board, bless it. But he also could have done it without it.
The Assistant, appointing of the Assistant Treasurer, yes, absolutely. So I just wanted to clarify that because I agree with Jason. I don't think that that was clear.
It was, not to my, I don't remember it.
Yeah, I mean, you guys should see a copy of that contract and decide if it's what you even want or what you want to pay for. If you want to go somewhere else or if you want to hire someone else to do that work, it's up to you. But you have to have that option in front of you to even know what you're even agreeing to.
Any more questions from the board on this matter?
Well, that's a good question. Should we actually have the contract come back in front of us?
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't got it yet. As soon as you get it.
He's going to get it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the board? Comments from the public?
Thanks, Cynthia, appreciate it.
Thank you, Cynthia, as always. Moving right along. BACO replacement update.
I can't remember who I misspoke to, but I wasn't sure of the delivery date. So I put you put in your packet the delivery date that Randy, is it Lebel? Lavelle?
Lavelle, yeah.
Lavelle from Urigard gave us, which is end of this month or early August for delivery. So I just thought I'd clear that up.
Questions from the board?
Are we going to talk about how we're going to pay for it?
This is the BACO.
We paid it. We paid for it.
Now we're on the truck.
So, and the money for the BACO came from?
The capital reserve at that time.
Equipment fund, okay. So we settle that.
Yes.
So at some point, we'll talk about the truck and we don't have to worry about it.
That's on there.
Okay.
All good stuff. Throw that dime if you got it. Any comments in public? Computer? Your comment? Okay. Cynthia Stoddard, folks.
It's not, it's not really about the BACO purchase. It's more about the process that you guys used to discuss that. And there were a couple of things that were said that I just wanted clarification on. There was a point in the discussion where there was discussion about, well, we'll get a short-term loan and then maybe have a meeting later. There was discussion about, I was curious what that thought process was because if you have a short-term loan, you buy something and then have a meeting later and you've already spent the money. Did I miss something in that conversation? I was just curious what that thought process, how you even pictured that that would be okay.
You want to, well, my view on it was, no, it wasn't okay. And that's why we took the money from the, from the fund that was there.
We discussed all different choices, not that we thought any, some of them were any good at all.
Okay.
Was like...
And then the other statement that was made when you were talking about the emergency fund was that you, if we use that, we could replenish it next year. How would you replenish the emergency fund?
Any surplus, we'd go back to the voters and ask if they wanted to. It would be up to the voters to move the money. Well, actually, we have a...
But what if we didn't have a surplus? It would be possible that it wouldn't be replenished.
Yeah, we'd have to come back and come up with how the plan would work.
There wasn't a thought process of, we'll raise taxes to replenish it?
No.
You're not discussing.
No. That was never...
Well, the comment was made that we'll replenish it. If we don't have money to replenish it, where is the money coming from? It's my question.
Because, can I throw out here? What happened was the money for the BACO was in the next year's budget.
Yeah, I know.
So basically, you go back to the voters and say, here, that was what our original thinking was, that we took the money, that's why we're using the word borrowing, but we shouldn't have. That we took the money and then we're going to replace it because we already had gone, we were going to the voters for the same amount, which was enough to pay for the BACO because the following year, we're not getting the truck.
But I'm just going to make one more. This is like the fifth year in a row that it's always, we're going to figure out how to pay something later, but we're going to get it now. And it's really, the BACO is a little bit of a different animal than what we've dealt with in the last few years because it's a piece of equipment. If we need a piece of equipment, I understand that. But it just always feels like we have these big pockets of money that there's no worry about the planning process that ever just gets thought out beforehand. It's really frustrating to me. Like I said, the BACO is a little bit different of an animal, but it was clear you and I were really trying to make that fit into an emergency need. And so I'm curious, too, what happened between the one vote to use emergency and then the next vote to use equipment? Was there somebody that said you cannot use emergency funding?
Yes, that's the counsel. The attorney said no.
So maybe this year, we could do a little bit of brainstorming on what constitutes an emergency so we don't have...
I think you're absolutely correct.
Can I say something?
Please.
So we're also hoping to, when we have time, to start a better five-year capital plan in which we would say exactly what we need, how much money we need, when we're going to do it and where we're going to get the money. Of course, I don't know where we're going to start, but when we have time, we're going to do that. So we've done some...
Yeah, and I could think during budgeting time, maybe put a little bit more money in the equipment reserve. So we actually build a reserve.
Right.
Usually, we put money in and spend it in the same year. It's really just a line item.
Right, exactly. The other thing I wanted to say is that emergency reserve fund, you know, my feeling about it is replenish it. We don't necessarily have to keep it at any certain amount, even though it says up to, what it's 20%. That doesn't mean that we can't have 15%. If we didn't have the money to put into it, then we don't have it.
Right, I just, yeah. I just heard that we could replenish it next year.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify.
If the voters said yes, then good. But it's not like we have to keep it at a certain amount.
Sir?
One of the things I wanted to, John Jones, started on record to discuss on, we'll talk about this more down the road and some upcoming meetings, procurement policies and the federal money that's coming in. They have a policy and it's really detailing what classifies an emergency for towns. And there's equipment in there. And so what I'd like to do is print that off and get it into the Select Board's hands so that you folks can see that issue, have those conversations.
Who has the policy?
So it's FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agents. So they govern this. Homeland Security governs all this money that we're forgetting, whether it's a pass-through grant at the state. They essentially tell us what we can and can't do and how we have to procure those services. And it was one of the documents gave that the reimbursement we can get if our highway rolls out, we can charge out for our trucks. And so as we do that, we can get creative to replenish some of those supplies once we identify them. That's just one of the things I'm trying to work on. See if folks can move forward with this stuff as we start to leverage a lot of this money that I think we can use in our community.
Sure.
One of the problems, Cynthia, we had, the trucks were about the most stable things as far as we're going. And since it's been here, all of a sudden, with new acts coming in, we're looking at an excavator, we're looking at a trailer, we're buying a roller, we're buying equipment that was even, even thought about years before this budget came. And that's what we weren't doing to get our job as far as, what are these things, unscheduled, what we have, we can schedule that, hey, this is good for 15 years, this is good for 10 years. It's all of a sudden, we're buying equipment. We're looking at another piece of equipment. They keep coming out with new stuff to help be more productive on our roads. But we're not, we're not seeing it come. When it does come, we're not prepared for it.
Right, that's why I said you should probably put more money in the capital reserve.
It's so hard to earmark it when you don't know what that equipment is even going to cost, you know?
You don't, you don't, you just build the reserve and you create your plan to know, this year, we need this much money. This year, we need this much money. What you guys are doing is not a new concept. It is something that towns do every day. I've been on that side of the table, trying to convince the town, we needed to buy a new excavator when our excavator was, what, it was 10 years old or something?[1660.05] what, it was 10 years old or something, but it was, it was, it was a piece of junk. So I get it, but it's not, you have to, you've got to think ahead. And what really bothers me here is it feels like we have so much money sitting around. I could run my budget at home easily if I had a half a million dollars sitting around. My car breaks down, I don't need to go fix it, I just go buy another one. So it's just, we're always in this perpetual cycle here of, oh my God, we gotta do this, oh my God, we gotta do this. And I don't see that in all the other places that I'm working all the time. I get this one maybe is a little bit outside of what we've had in the past few years, but if we're not saving enough money for equipment because of what you're talking about, then we need to convince the taxpayers that we need to put more away and actually build a reserve.
I agree.
It's not hard to convince, but we're not, we're not against equipment. You know, but we're the out-of-the-box thinking too. What are other towns doing? Are they sharing equipment? Do we have to own one piece of equipment all ourselves? We talked about it with excavator. You know, and so there's some out-of-the-box thinking that can be done too, but we're always in this like, ah, ah, it's an emergency, everything's an emergency.
Well, the cost of everything is gonna go up too.
Right, and we need to save some more money.
Substantially, probably.
But to me, we use that emergency money, the septic fails here, the roof, something happens to it that's not covered by insurance, that's an emergency. That stuff has to be fixed. But like you said, the capital plan will help ask us for some more money to take some money out of that emergency this year and put it in the equipment fund, the capital reserve. So that if this happens next year, you've already got that money earmarked from the townspeople already in that equipment fund. Explain to us next March, look, last year we ran into a problem, we needed a backhoe. We really wanted to, we don't need this much emergency money sitting around. It's hard to define an emergency. We're gonna move it to capital reserve and actually build the reserve. I would go for that.
I would agree 100%, because when we made that emergency fund, I had a hard time figuring it out.
Well, you know how I felt then.
Yeah, I know.
You guys are gonna be arguing someday about what's an emergency.
Oh, right from day one, we couldn't even agree on how to write it up.
Yeah. So maybe it's time to move some of that out of there, put it in the capital reserve for equipment.
Yeah.
And then it's there, and we don't have this.
Well, the good news is the next topic on the new business will be exactly what we were just discussing.
Yeah, I'm curious about that again.
Is there any further discussion on the backhoe replacement from the public? On the computer? Seeing none, thank you all for your commentary. Okay, new business, first order of business, truck purchase, financing discussion.
I will. So that's, that's the truck, that's the deal, that's how much money we have, according to Russ. What we have left in the capital fund is roughly $50,000. That means we're $83,000 short. Second page was if they wanted to borrow the money for it. This is another whole discussion, that's what you could do. I picked two years, payment in the rear is really a three years, because you don't make a payment when you ask a purchase, that you pay the following year and the following. And not that I'm for it, I was just trying to make your choices a little clearer. So right now, it's 133, if you take 50 out of the capital, you're $83,000 short. However, next year, that's when you were gonna buy the backhoe. Is the truck, I ordered this truck, uh, August or September of last year. It is gonna be built next, the end of this month. And by the time he sees it, it'll be another three months, so you're looking at September, October before you can see it. And that's, like I said, that's what's happening. We've already ordered all of next year's truck, so any town that wanted a truck has already had to order for all of next year. And the price of the truck's going up, but the price of the equipment, and we're getting to a point where the equipment that's on the truck is gonna be almost as much as the cabin chassis. Because the equipment took huge raises this year because of steel and 100% of all equipment is made in Canada. And the dollar exchange between the US and Canada, this is not very good. And that's what's really killing the equipment right now. Don't ask me why everyone's owning it in Canada, we still can't figure that out, but that's where we're at. So I was already hit up. So I just had the 62,500, that's a package that came in, and they already gave me an estimate next year. It's gonna be 85,000 to 90,000 for the same package. This shows you how bad it is. The truck, if you ordered it and waited another year, if the base cost was 117 for this truck, it'd probably go to 121 or something like that. So it's not a huge amount on the truck, it's just equipment. And one of the reasons is you can't get the equipment, you're over a year to get the equipment. It's, and obviously the cabin chassis doesn't do anything without the equipment. There's less equipment companies around, there's only one or two left doing it. And they're just, like anybody else, can't get help and they're booked out so far that you have to almost beg them to, to get the, so to get the equipment to put on the chassis. It's kind of a weird position we're in, who knows, but I would think this is gonna last at least two years.
I have a quick question. So what do you mean by equipment? Is that the file and the file blade?
Yeah, that would be the 62.5 is the base, and then he gets to choose what blade, blades go from. And then he has the other thing, that $7,800 blade, I just bought one today and it was $11,000 for the same blade. It's gone nuts.
I just wanted to know what you meant by that.
That's the equipment. So the truck is there, the rest is the warranty, and then the bottom where it says Viking, anything that says Viking or Everest, that's the equipment that goes on. So this is costing us 60, it's around $70,000. And you're looking at almost $100,000 next year for the same equipment. It just shocked me, I couldn't get over it.
Chair recognizes John Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I, the funding we're getting, hopefully in the next couple of months, we can earmark and then through, we can use it for one-time things. And so there's only a stipulation for fire districts, that's a separate thing for them to ask the select board to submit money. And maybe there's an opportunity here, let you folks look at it, to use some of that money to help soften some of these expenses we're seeing right now with the equipment.
It's a possibility. I've done, I've just, I've done four or five so far this year, but every one, you have to destroy the trade. It's to get, there have to be pre-emissions, which means it had to be a truck before 2010. So it's causing a lot of emissions problems. And then there is a buyback on some of that stuff, but you can see they're trading, we've got 62,000.
I'm sorry, I know, go ahead with the new truck. I'm just saying the funding we're getting for, we're talking about some shortfalls we're having. If we need 40 grand in this fund for the, when that money comes in, we earmark, because you folks are gonna earmark this year. So maybe, I'm just using 40,000 as an example here.
You're talking about ARPA funds?
Yes, the ARPA.
Unless something changes, the paperwork we got before, I don't think equipment was.
I know you're seeing that that particular purchase would be eligible.
You were about to use it for one-time purchases that don't, you can't start something up.
So. That's not the initial stuff that we received.
It was pretty limited, but it could be.
It was very limited to public service, not, not equipment or nor.
COVID-related infrastructure.
That's why we still haven't got all the details yet.
So on the back end of that, it's talking about infrastructure repair to maintenance. Equipment falls under what we need to maintain that infrastructure.
Not discouraging, I'm just saying, yeah, I don't know where it's come, I don't.
We haven't got that yet in any way, shape, or form.
I will print it off and have it in your hands by next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Now you folks can at least look at it. I'm just saying, consider it, look at it, let's see what we can do.
Look at anything that comes to money, yeah.
May I make a comment? Thank you. So building off of Leonard's, Fiddy Larry's, June 21st memo, the select board does not have the authority to place, excuse me, forgive me. We need voter approval and/or an annual special meeting, either for the loan to cure it, or, and Cynthia, if I'm wrong, please tell me.
I will, you remember.
Uh, no, no, if I'm wrong, we can also go to the voters and make an argument for, as you said, taking some of the money out of the emergency fund.
We definitely would have to have a public hearing for the emergency reserve.
We would, but those seem like, that seems like the viable thing to do unless anyone has other suggestions. Yes, Mr. Jones, John Jones.
So I have one more, can the select board borrow money without voter approval? Obviously get voter approval, but there is borrowing from the state municipal equipment loan fund for purchases that you could look at exploring. And fire department can do it as well, it's under 19 VSA Section 304A and 1786B. And so this is right on Vermont Bees of Cities and Towns. If you folks go on there, there's 10 bullish, it gives you some lateral flexibility on things, and so you could probably explore that with those folks and see.
What do you say, John, could borrow from what?
Thank you, sir.
I highlighted the bullet for you. Still being some questions, do we have the authority to borrow money?
State fund, yeah.
This loan in here that I have through Dimer, is what they do is they look at, they have attorneys on there. When we go to them, we do loan a lot of money through Dimer Benz, who's our main. And they actually have to look at each town, see how they're chatted, and see whether the select board has a right to borrow. Some towns, each year, they have to have a renewal of the lease, you know, so they look at how it's chatted. So even on that finance, they look at somewhere along the line, the voters couldn't make the town turn it back in, they have to take it back. Now, would they on this one? Because of such a down payment, of course, no town would do it. But it's kind of, I don't think there's a question that we couldn't borrow the money, I'm just questioning why. For example, on this, even if you borrow for two years, you're gonna pay $5,000 worth of interest when, like we've been saying right along, there, we do have the money, but it's in another pool, which is the emergency fund that's sitting there, that we're not getting that kind of interest. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to us. I would, I would agree with him, to go to the voters and say, instead of borrowing the money, why don't we just take it from this fund? And we'll let it build up more next year, because we won't be taking as much out.
Chair recognizes Cynthia started.
So have we already, we haven't already ordered this truck?
No, the truck was on order for whether Westminster takes it or not.
Okay.
So if Westminster decides, I don't want it.
Because I was gonna say, what different, I mean, if you already ordered it, committed to buying it, we really don't have a choice but pay for it. But, um, because like you were saying, to come to the voters, I think they'd say no, no, but what if they did?
Well, we went to the voters, let's back it, we went to the voters and we told you that we were in, we were gonna be spending this amount of money on the truck. We did tell the voters we were buying a truck this year, and we told them how much. We just kind of took the money from the truck and put it towards, so really if we go to the voters and do what Kevin's saying, have a meeting, go to the voters, even indirectly, we're actually asking the money for the, for the backhoe. Really, is what we're doing. Because we couldn't wait for the backhoe, we could wait for the truck. If the truck was first, we wouldn't have this discussion, we'd be having a meeting for the backhoe. But the only reason we did it was on a time level where the backhoe had to have a decision right away, otherwise we would have delayed it and gone to the voters for that.
I mean, I have an issue with you saying you have the right to, to, to commit the voters to a payment in the future doing a loan. And I agree with you, if we have money sitting somewhere.
I didn't say, I guess you missed a step, I was saying our, the, the finance company looks at that. When they go to look at, see how the town is chatted, that's what they're looking at. It's like how, who can borrow the money now? So when we send it to them.
Finance company, the voters are who I care about.
Okay.
And I think that they have to be asked if you, they want to commit them to a payment in the future.
I would, I don't think we're, I would disagree with you there.
Sir, do you know?
I have kind of a dumb question, actually. It may not, it may, may actually be a moot point, but have any of this equipment gone out for bids to anybody? Or do we just look somebody up and say, okay, we're buying it from you? Anybody ask for a low price on the, on this stuff?
Yeah, we do. Yes, we got, we got three prices.
Oh, you did?
New and used.
Because it's like, it seems like everything is just set in stone right now. We're going with this company and this company, we're buying this for this price and this price, this price. So it's like, is there anything cheaper out there?
Well, if I may, Kevin Hughes, if I may just interject, we do have the COVID issue.
Sure.
Which has created a backlog in the.
That's everywhere.
Right. So one of the things we ran up against with the backhoe was the possibility of, Chuck, you correct me, buy it or lose it, right?
Correct, but we did, we did go. Cheapest, yeah. Right, so, so it was Chuck Lawrence wrote for me. So we, we went with the cheapest price and also availability.
And the used one, we looked at used.
We looked at the used one too, and there was. Yeah, there was, there wasn't much difference between actually new and used with what was available. So they chose to go with new. Had a better warranty and of course, being brand-new, it just makes more sense. So longevity-wise and trade-in value and all that. So there's just more bang for your buck at the end of the day.
Plus facing a seasonal backdrop too. I mean, you have a limited window to do certain, requiring that piece of equipment.
So, yeah, some of the other ones wasn't even an option. So if we had gone with Cat or John Deere, it wouldn't even have been an option this year to be able to, to get that piece of equipment. We chose Case because it was cheaper and also it was going to be available. Like Craig was talking, the dealer had ordered so many units for his dealership, and he actually had a backhoe that hadn't had a name put on it yet. So it was available to us. So we, we, the select board voted to purchase it and put our name on it. So that's how we, that's how we ended up with it. But we did, we, we ended up going with Cat, Case, and John Deere. And every one of them gave the price of a new and used backhoe that they had available. And the case turned out that a brand-new one was the best deal out of all of them. So that's how we ended up there anyway.
Pat, can you please state your name for the camera and for the man?
Oh, I thought I did.
You did.
Oh, Pat Mayo.
Thank you, Patrick Mayo. Um, so to just finish up, so they're calling for a meeting, a town meeting, to ask for the mechanism in which to pay for the 10-wheeler. Which would include also going to the emergency fund for that money.
Oh, and I understand all that. I always just, the question is, that I had was basically, well, this gone out for bids, let's say like everything's set in stone now, we're going with this company for this truck, and this for that, but the last meeting, it was also decided on, was the case in the last meeting. But the truck thing never came up. And it said, well, we're gonna buy that next year, we're gonna buy it this year, we're gonna buy it next year. But like, as you just said, it was on order, it's been on order since, of being built since last, last year, correct?
It's, so it's totally changed. We have, we used to do is wait to march, the meeting get over with. And all the towns would call in April, May, and start to say, hey, we need to bid. We would bid it, and then they would start building them in June so they can have them for the fall. Now we're a year be out, so how do you get a truck? So now what we sit down is we actually as a dealer look at, okay, there's 72 towns that we are, already look, we already know who has trucks in order in their budget. So we say, okay, out of, out of 72 towns that I might do, I'll get 50 of them. And we say, then we say, how many are six-wheelers? How many are tandems? How many are this? And then we throw the order in, we just say, here, for the first and second quarter, don't want them for the third and fourth quarter, because there won't be that year, there'll be a following year. So I, and it's how bad it is, I delivered a truck two, six weeks ago, I guess it's been. It was ordered in April of 2018, I just delivered it. So they couldn't have ordered it. I ordered one that was special, and the town of Woodstock called me and go, hey, where are we at? And I said, well, you're still a year away, but it's a point on order. Do we go to bid? Yeah, we do, because Chuck calls around to two other dealers. Hey, we're looking at buying this truck right here, could you bid and give us a price? So he calls two other dealers. The problem we've got now is we're like the only dealer with a trade-in for the $62,000. Really, a lot of dealers go, we don't want to trade it, we just don't want to deal with it. So it's getting to be less, the other problem is you can't bid the bodies. So in other words, if you want that equipment, and they're gone with Viking, Viking is territorial, nobody else will bid a Viking. So I always used to complain, when you want to go out with a truck, but wait a minute, the equipment's almost half. And if you're going with that equipment, you're only getting one price. And there's only two, two equipment guys, that's all. And the only reason is they've all gone to factory now, there is no more stores you buy in direct. It is confusing, but, but the answer to your question, if the select board came along and said, we want to go with this truck, the next thing they should do is, no, the next thing should be, they should call two more dealers. Just make sure that this, that there is no other truck out there and that that price is reasonable.
To the last truck, we did that, we did. And they won't bid on it because it's not in their territory, it's not in their area. So I don't think it's from lack of trying, they won't, they literally won't give you that price.
Every, every day I get ones from Burlington, South Burlington, and I'm going, thank you, but no, I'm not gonna drive up there and spend a day to appraise a truck, it takes you a day to come up with a bid. It's been two days doing it all, knowing that, why would you buy it from me? And really, honestly, we're all within a couple thousand dollars, it's more the trade. I've always made sure that we gave more for the trade than anybody, because it's our town. So the one thing our town has, in, if this truck was already in order, and if you were, let's say, Woodstock, I'd sell you that same truck to Woodstock. Westminster doesn't get a discount. Where they get the discount is on the trade. We'd be given, and always you get about 10 grand more for trade because you're in my town. Because the trade's worth more coming from my local town than it is. And it's getting to a point where this trade next year, or two years from now, he's into the 80,000 or 90,000 dollar trades. They're getting to be more and more expensive because of the price of new one. That the trade is gonna determine what's gonna happen with this matter.
And we tend to take care of them a little better than, a lot of other towns.
And in, as they build up the clientele, we have to find a home for these used ones. And what we're finding that all these clientels are contractors that do Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, they will call because they bought Westminster's truck before, it was a good truck. They'll call back and they'll pay more for Woodstock, Westminster, and a few towns. It is, the business has changed in the last 20 years, that's for sure.
Any further commentary from the board?
And this is still about the truck?
Yes.
So it seems like these are options. To go to the public and ask to take money out of the emergency reserve fund.
Yes.
Purchase a truck, not purchase the truck this year. Or borrow money in purchasing the truck.
Ask the voters for permission to borrow the money, yes.
Are those the three, only three options we have?
How much money are we looking for?
Pardon?
How much money are we looking for? What's the difference between what we have?
83,000? 83, 83.
I know that's really hard to make up in a budget year, but are there any other things that we're doing this year that we could cut?
that we're doing this year that we could cut?
Can I just ask the question, what if we had an emergency, like a flood that we had or we lost roads or, and just like a, where, where does our money come from? If you use this money out of the emergency fund for this truck, and if you had a real emergency, isn't that what it's for, is a?
Very good question, and I'm going to pivot to whoever was here for Irene to really lay the groundwork of what happens when that happens.
I wasn't here.
I mean, that was an extensive, extreme example.
Totally was here, I was here.
Doesn't take much to spend a hundred thousand dollars either.
Not, are they at all?
No, I mean.
Honestly, that one was a little different because it wasn't just Westminster, it was the whole area. And so they, FEMA got involved, everybody got called. We just called up the local bank and they already had money coming in that, we needed a million dollars to get started and all that, and so there was a group effort of everybody coming in to help out, so it was a little different. But that is my definition of an emergency, we lost road. The other emergency we had was Venus Hill, when Venus Hill wiped out, it was a hundred and eighty, we fought for that money for years, Chuck, it was probably, wasn't in there then. And that was because the road got wiped out, that was totally unique to Westminster, it was rare. And we fought for four years before we got that money back. So we went, borrowed the money, paid the loan off and then we end up getting it all, most of it back from the state as part of the two thousand eleven also, this was the year before.
Surplus all the time.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Borrowed the money, paid for the money, and got money. And was taxed on it, this is why we're having surplus issues. I know people don't think surpluses are an issue, but they are.
They are, they are.
But we kept being told that we weren't going to get the money, so. So I, I think in the big world of emergency, yes, you just go to, you just go and do what you gotta do. So I'm questioning like everybody else, why did we put the word emergency into this fund? When we need it, if it's going to use for something like this, because this might not, in some people's mind, consider it be an emergency, you know?
Remember too, we have a large undesignated surplus as well.
I think they're throwing money, I mentioned to us.
So, so in the general fund, we, we not only have this emergency fund, we have a lot of money in the undesignated surplus. So we have a lot of money kind of just laying around. Why, it's really easy to not worry about planning. Well, but does that mean you can just write a check for eighty-three thousand and not put it into any? If you want to do that, you'll probably hear from me about this. Right, exactly. Because I think you should ask the voters to use the undesignated, but. So in your question though about the, the emergency that might come up, we have a cushion in the general fund as well as this emergency fund. So not only do we have this money for, to help pay for the road that might wash out in the emergency fund, we have it.
I thought it was just an example.
No, I'm just talking about.
But Cynthia, you brought up a good point, is, so we do have a third choice. The third choice is to reach into, I'm picking on Chuck, but you have to come out of his budget.
Not necessarily, there will be something that the town was.
Oh, really? So I was thinking that.
Their highway budget's part of their general fund.
But if we were to reach in and take seventy-five thousand, eighty-three thousand out of the paving, we would actually short paving, but we would actually have the right to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if we should not have another meeting where we go back and look to see where we could actually get as much money, see how close we could get to it out of this year's budget, is what you're saying?
But does that put you behind in your paving, so, but that's why I said.
Well, I'm just, I'm just.
That's why I said, I mean, I haven't looked at the budget to see where it could be, it doesn't necessarily have to be out of the highway budget. I don't know if there's anything big in the other.
I don't know.
But.
So wait, I'm sorry, again, are you saying you can take seventy-three or eighty-three thousand out of the highway budget and you're just going to?
Technically, technically you could. It's just a discussion, I'm not saying we do it.
Two roads, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I know you guys are laughing, but when we, in my household and in everybody's household, we all have to, when something comes up that has to be done, we have to cut somewhere else. So I get that, I get that we would be behind in paving. I'm not suggesting that we take it out of paving, I mean, I understand you're just using that as an example. But you laugh about it, but we all have to do it.
No, I, I.
And, and.
I don't think it's a joke, I really think we need to go back and look at everything from the fuel budget to sand, to gravel, all that.
There's a surplus in the highway budget this year.
Right.
So where did that?
Right.
Come from and was it because we got more money than we spent? I don't know, I didn't analyze it enough to know, but I'm not, I'm not even saying that's what we have to do, I'm just saying that is the other option.
I would agree with you, yeah.
So, Chuck Lawrence wrote for me, so when we get reimbursed from Cory Road, all that came out of my budget.
Yeah.
Our budget, it's all our money.
Yeah.
But that came out of the highway budget, we did a job, it was a grant job. When we get reimbursed for that, that money is what you should be using for something like this. Don't take it out of the paving budget.
No, no, don't.
I know, I'm just saying, whatever, gravel or anything else, or culverts or whatever, it should be, that's your surplus.
Well, that's why they need to separate the highway fund from the general fund.
I agree one thousand, that's what we talked about last year.
You know what surplus belongs to what, and you're right. Probably part of that large surplus that we have right now is mostly highway. We just can't prove it because we haven't tracked it over the years. That's the solution to that.
Didn't we just talk about that money coming in and it couldn't go back to that, even though it was highway reimbursement?
Because they're not separate, but.
We chose the way it's set up right now.
His budget, right? We just talked about that.
But, I, you know, we might not come up with eighty-three, but maybe we could at least come up with thirty or forty and basically it would just lighten the burden a little bit. So I think that before we go to the voters and ask for the money, we should take one look at it. In, in the budget we're in, what can, what she says, what can we come up with in, in dollar amounts to go towards that?
Further discussion, yes, Russ?
Professor, um, I would suggest though that we don't cut anything real. So don't cut paving.
We'll only cut big relief, right?
But no, the, the emergency, you know, the other surplus is funny money. It's, it's money that's already designated for the future.
Good example, where, where does the price of fuel go? Because that's a crystal ball and we're halfway, you know, we just started the year, but did the, is the price going up? We have a lot, you know, we can look at it to see where we're at, that's all on it.
So let me suggest something. If, if there's a point where the town does want to break out the highway budget, we're at the beginning of a fiscal year, why couldn't we, we haven't been audited yet. Why couldn't we analyze this last fiscal year budget to see what the highway, why can't we break it out July first? Then there might be a surplus in the highway. So minimize the town's undesignated surplus.
Yeah.
So there might be money in that highway, we, I mean, we would start at zero, I, I mean, I would have to talk to the auditor and see what that, we haven't closed the books completely here for July thirty first, I mean, June thirtieth. So you, when, when I create a highway fund somewhere, we have to start with some number. And it's an agreed upon, in Guilford we did it, I sat down with the highway foreman and said, okay, this is the number I came up with, is this an agreed upon number? And we started the, the fund with that number.
Normally when we take that fund, we skip a year though, right? Normally if we got done last year, we spend this year coming up with the audit to go back to the voters next year to say we want to take and put the money into the following year, but what you're saying is you're going back right now and look at what?
How we ended the June.
How we ended it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to check with the auditor to see what the legalities of it are and if that is proper accounting to do that right now.
I can say, that was always the issue, was that you're skipping that year. You go, you know what I'm saying, you jump, when we go to the voters next March, we've already known what that passes, but we're already saying, we're going to use that surplus to go to the following year, not the year.
We have a highway budget, we know, it just happens to be.
If you can look at it.
So the town has voted on a highway budget, they just didn't vote it separately. You pull those, that, you take that out of the general fund, create a highway fund with that budget and try to come up with what during this last fiscal year was their revenues? And what was their expenses? I mean, you may have to start it at zero, I don't know, and they may have, you know what I mean, and they go forward to there, but.
I think it's a good input.
Just a thought.
I think, I think the suggestions you're making are wonderful and I'm wondering whether you're volunteering.
No, probably it would be something, I've been rocking camp three days a week right now, so probably something thoroughly moving on with that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
It's definitely worth going up, Cynthia, really, yeah. Because that's the goal we've been talking about, getting there anyways.
Okay, I think we're talking this to death.
John Jones.
That's fine, no, that's, that's fine, actually, I was trying to go back to a mile or two, but we're past that for now, let's talk about that. It's been brought up in the past, towns in Vermont do this. Is the intention to strip out the highway from the, from the town, the intention to set them up as their own district?
Not typically in what I've seen, no.
So I'm trying to understand the benefit, that if you're not establishing a district for the highway that other towns do, hold on, let me finish here, versus just keep it under the select board, what, what is the benefit? You're essentially taking, so the treasurer would have to keep it up at ledger balance, we're going to have this conversation in the next meeting about some other things. So I just was trying to understand the, the intention here to, to remove the highway out from the town. Is it its own district, is that how you're trying to set it up now?
It's just a bookkeeping.
Do you want clarity? Would that need to?
Yeah.
The benefits that I see are that you keep the highway dollars, it's a, it's a separate fund within your accounting system, it is still a general fund under the purview of the select board, you don't have a different board, it's just another accounting method. So that you know at the beginning of the year, the highway started with this money, this is the revenue they got in, this is the expenses and this is the balance that's left.
So the Bennetton Highway setup, they would have Bennetton Town at zero, then they have one, which is the highway, two, which is their fire district or fire department. And when they're set up that way, any money that comes from up above in incentives get broken out evenly based upon the rate for the stair budget over there and the town's budget, they would, they would be separated.
Uh, you'd have to, you'd have to give me an example of the money you're talking about because if he applies for a grant for a highway project and the expense gets to highway project, his grant pays for that, that, the entire, you don't split it across the funds.
Which right now, we're taking all that grant money and just putting it back into general.
Yeah, I just want a clarification on this, this.
It's more to keep track of the revenue.
I will say though, just so that, that everybody understands, it, you are going to have a little bit more, you, you should vote that highway budget separate. The tax rate's going to be the highest one out of the group and you also have to, and I can't remember what your budget, I can't remember if you budget the benefits, health insurance and all of that in the department, or no?
It gets in the executive department.
Right, so that would also break out. So your budget would actually be higher than what you're normally seeing because your payroll and benefits actually is the biggest part of the, the budget.
The budget's the same, it's just separated out, it's just more.
You have more expenses, you have more expenses to look at and that are part of the highway budget than you're used to seeing. You're looking right now just at your expenses for.
Right.
Right, but payroll and the benefits that go along with payroll are the biggest part of the entire budget. So that's a, that would be a.
So the extra money that we get now that goes into the general fund that covers that would just be separated out and would actually cover the highway. So we just have a couple more line items, but at the end of the day, the money's still the money.
Right.
Any further comments, uh, from anyone from the computer? Okay. Yes, Russ Lazaric.
When do we need a decision on the financing for the truck?
Another month or so, there's no rush. A month.
Month is in law.
Month is not long and we also have to schedule a meeting. We have to notify, we have to do a notification for a town meeting.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah. So.
I agree with you, I, I mean, if I were you, I'd probably warn a meeting and maybe it's just, can we move some of that money in the emergency fund over to the capital reserve to start building it? It doesn't even.
Warning the meeting doesn't change any of that, we can still continue on with that program.
Yeah.
Take a motion to warn that meeting. I would take that too.
Can I just, yeah, interject?
Please.
The, uh, there will be on August thirty-one a, uh, a vote on approving a, within, within Westminster, on approving a financial separation agreement, financial agreement with the unified district as part of reestablishing the town school district. And also another article to, uh, expand the sort of existing interim board, it's got three members, to five members. So it may be possible to, um, to have this, this issue dealt with at the same time.
Could it be the same?
August thirty-one.
That one's going to be an Aus, that one's just a regular town meeting, not an Australian.
It's Australia, that's Australian.
So we're, this one really wouldn't be an Australian, it'd be an open meeting, that way. Right.
It could, or it could be.
You can have both, I guess?
Yes.
You'd have an informal meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure you need to have this as an open town meeting, you could have those Australian with hearing prior to. That is this monetary.
It could do August thirty-first, which is, it's a Tuesday, it's the last day of the month, obviously. That still gives us, if we do it now, if something changes, we still have until, we have one more meeting and still be thirty days out if it doesn't work, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, although it's, the, having the vote is not the same as a public hearing.
Right. That's why I'm saying it's not the same, but.
Public hearing before and after.
Yeah, you'd have to. And warning, in the warning, you need to decide, are you asking the town voters to approve a, a, um, using the surplus, undesignated surplus funds? Or asking the town voters to use the emergency funds? I think that there's a, there's a fairly basic decision you have to make once you know how much undesignated surplus you have and once you have decided whether you want to use emergency funds at all.
So if you come up with great answers, that should be enough time. Sounds like a great idea to me.
Well, he's saying that we should warn a hearing about taking the money from the undesignated surplus instead of the emergency reserve fund, which makes me much happier because then you don't set a precedent of no borrowing money from the emergency reserve fund.
The only thing, question is, normally we don't discuss that till later in the years, often early in the year we discuss.
I know, it is early, but if it's possible.
There's this convenient.
Yeah.
But if we go ahead and, at least as a select board, to get Russ going on and say we're going to do the thirty-first, that gives us enough time to come back to one more meeting and have the discussion.
Exactly.
I am so moved.
Thank you, Tommy.
And I second that.
You moved what? I'm sorry, I moved that we use, with David's suggestion about using.
August thirty-first.
So you're going to include, beyond, you're going to include, well, I just, yeah, no. Nate just called and said you needed more detail, so, am I supposed to just pull this out of the air?
Let's hope, let's hope Nate's watching the show.
It's a meeting that's going to happen.
But you just can't, you can't piggyback on the school board just because you want to. You can't piggyback on this just because that's what you want to do, I don't think, can you? Well, sorry.
Now, it is the time to.
The only reason I came over there is the thirty day notice, that next meeting is on the twenty-eighth. So we have one more meeting is the twenty-eighth, we still have the thirty day.
But there is no motion.
No.
No, I, I don't know.
Yeah, she's so moved.
You're just going to discuss the next meeting, what you want, to have a warning.
That's correct, you're right, we'll just put it on the next meeting.
August twenty-eighth is not enough time to get the July ten, July. Excuse me, July twenty-eighth is not time enough to warn, uh, a piggyback to the Australian ballot on the thirty-first because the shopper only comes out once a week, so that would be a Wednesday, so it would be the following Wednesday and that's already too late.
Does this have to be Australian? That would question it being Australian, you're going to have a lot of people that aren't going to know what it means.
No, it's not going to be, it's going to be just, just by coincidence.
I, I, I think if you, excuse me, I'm busy, Major.
Please.
I think if you are going to, uh, do it at the same time as this other vote, you would want to do it Australian and you'd have a hearing, a. And you'd have a hearing a week prior to, or something like that. And I think you're right, Russ. You would have to make the decision right now.
It's gotta be right now.
That you would do, that you'd warn that Australian vote. But it certainly doesn't have to be, and it was just a.
We just have a public hearing with a floor vote.
Yeah, I would keep it simple. You're, you're opening yourself up for a lot of people not understanding.
Yes, Cynthia Stoddard.
Are we able to vote in Westminster money items Australian ballot? I thought we, that's not how we vote.
I'm gonna say, I stopped from day one, we're not doing this Australian ballot. We're just having a, like a typical open meeting where we move it on the floor a second and the people say yea or nay.
It's a special meeting.
Right, the only reason would you ever do it, I was thinking it was that if they have any questions, they could put the school on the agenda so if somebody wanted to ask questions about it, it could, I guess.
Russell? Excuse me, I didn't mean to be rude. How quickly will you need a determination as to exactly what we're putting on that?
If you're not piggybacking until August thirty-first, I don't, the, the urgency's gone. So you'll just pick another date that you will be doing this in person and at a location of your choice.
I was alluding to, uh, that we were going to at least try to vet, um, the other money utilization.
I, I guess you lost me.
You get two choices.
You get, right, but you're gonna do this in person, so.
No, no, forget that. Didn't we just have a discussion? You would know where I stood beforehand.
Right.
Kevin Hughes Chair, uh, to take the money out of the emergency fund or get a loan.
Well, now there's a third one.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
So.
So, um, but according to David, we have to have specifically what that warning's gonna be. What are we actually asking him to consider?
It has to be what you're voting on, right? We are moving money from here.
Right, that's exact, that's the question I'm asking.
So why don't we just put it on the agenda for next time? So that Russ could come back. Because we've discussed surplus, we've discussed some things that Cynthia brought us that we should just, and come back to us with those three. And then we would decide as select board that this is the one we want to pursue and this is the one we want to ask the voters.
On the twenty-eighth.
On the twenty-eighth. Does that make sense?
Yep.
You've got a little bit of homework there.
I didn't, I didn't think you had time enough. If you, if you wait.
We're not gonna wait to, if it's after the thirty-first, it's no big deal.
Oh, okay.
I, nothing looks more foolish for us to rush in there and not have it. And I, I would agree with Cynthia and everything. We look at all the different choices and then as a select board, we choose, this is the one we want to ask, so it's clear why we're asking.
Yes, we can, unless there is any further comment. Seeing none, moving on to the Prudential Committee.
So she withdraw her motion?
Yeah, we had a so moved, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's gonna withdraw.
No, Susan said.
Okay, Prudential Committee. Financial discussion.
Okay. So in your packet, you have, um, Ginnie Dearborn's, um, brief memorandum stating what they're, um, what they need for paperwork. We had this on your agenda just so that you could get ready for next meeting, which will be with the Prudential Committee. So, um, anyway, it, it, it seems like, um, it's a matter of paperwork, not, um, dipping into funds that we can't or have that discussion dipping into funds we can't. So, um, it will be, um, it'll be done in, in a sequence that, that the fire district would get their, their payment, um, as they always do after taxes are received, which would be, um, the first one in latter part of September, early October, minus the homestead in Pilot. And when we got that check in November, um, from the state, then they would get a portion of that in accordance with, um, the calculations from the state of how they would do it. So then they can monitor the, the input of it so that they can, um, continue with their grant proposal. And we would still be able to be, um, transparent to taxpayers where the monies are still what we voted on. So it will be a little bit more work, but it'll be very doable. And it makes sense that that's.
And we will have Chad queue it through it all the way.
Absolutely. Yep.
Any discussion from the board? General public. Computer. Seeing none, moving on to parking restrictions ordinance Forest Road update.
So what I sent you in your packet has been updated. I finally got, um, the Wyndham County Sheriff to weigh in. And, um, they are the ones who really wanted the last sentence in under Forest Road, which I'll read because you, you don't have it. Hopefully you have a packet. All offenses shall be counted on a calendar year basis and with, in accordance with twenty-three VSA Section one zero zero eight. This ordinance has been created for the safety of the public and the access of emergency vehicles and responders. With that, then, um, illegal parking on Forest Road would be prohibited on both sides and would be enforceable. So, um, that's what I was waiting for is their response to, um, the wording and, um, Chuck and I met with the group from Forest Road and watched the whole thing. Um, and pretty much, uh, we're in agreeance of what we, what we need to do. They might at some point get together and petition for us to change the one-way, um, reverse it. Um, instead of coming down the hill on the Bellas Falls end, we would, uh, make all traffic go into Gageville and come, uh, head north on the road and then leave, um, Forest Road going north towards Bellas Falls. We feel that that could possibly restrict or, um, add burden to those people that are, uh, infringing on the, um, the benefit of the road and doing unlawful things, um, with parking. So that is a discussion they're gonna have later. But all the players seem to be pretty open to the, to the concept, but that's not in front of you. The policy is at this point.
So you need us to adopt this policy?
You can if you're ready to. If you're not, then it's a draft still, um, you.
But even if we adopt it, they're not gonna enforce this until?
Sixty days.
Sixty days after August eleventh. Right.
Sixty days after this date.
Well, it says here, it says due to you on this date, the eleventh day of August two thousand twenty-one. What does that mean? Date of enactment? On the back page, do you see what it says?
Sorry.
So I'm thinking that on August eleventh it becomes, but it doesn't become, and you can't enforce it for another sixty days after that.
Yep, the dates will have to be changed. Sorry.
Oh, that's the wrong date. Okay, that's fine.
So we will wait till the next meeting and have this, uh, document amended appropriately.
Yep.
Any additional information from the, uh, affected citizens too can be, uh, checked in on, uh, if they have anything else that comes up.
Yep.
Any comment?
No, it looks okay outside of that.
Okay, from the public? Okay, moving on.
I have one question on this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, God, ma'am, um, on the, uh, the fines. I read in your, Earl, on, on the other, the other one that I had earlier, or, or the previous one. The, the fines were like, uh, um, first offense fifty hundred, but you could also pay, instead of paying that, that actual fine itself, instead of going to like, like, um, court to pay it. It was just like you pay a administrative fee or something? Is that written on there?
On parking, that doesn't apply.
It doesn't, okay.
So that's why we, we had to put the fine schedule in it.
Okay.
Because, um, there is no negotiation to a parking ticket. You're either parking or you're not.
Exactly, right.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to appointment to lister's position, Joan Harlow.
In your packet, you have, um, a request, um, consideration to fill the empty lister spot, um, for the remainder of two thousand twenty-one. She has a, um, an abundance of experience with the town of Rockham as a lister. We have talked to the listers, of course, and they're, um, falling behind on, on the, um, clerical part. And Joan has, that's really where her roundhouse is. Um, this would be a great fit for, um, them. And, uh, I, I would recommend it. It, it, right now we are showing some.
I'll move that we, uh, to move it along. I'll move, of course, she changes her mind. I'll move that, uh, we appoint Joan Harlow to the position as one of the remainder of this year as a lister.
Motion has been made to appoint Joan Harlow as a lister. I second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Mother Harlow in town running something, I love it.
Joan Harlow is now appointed as a lister. Resignation and appointment, Unified School Board. Welcome, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
In your packet, you have the official response from Cin, uh, excuse me, from Cheryl. And David's here to speak on her behalf.
And on Elise Manning's behalf because, um, we are in this interim period between, uh, having voted to, uh, reform our own town school district and next fiscal year, which begins July one, twenty twenty-two. Um, where the, we have to, uh, work out the finances and so on, uh, in reforming, uh, our town school district. Um, so, uh, as you, as you probably recall, a couple, a couple of weeks ago now, we had a town vote. Elected a three-person school board to, uh, begin, uh, representing the town. That includes, uh, Cheryl Charles, who is also on the unified town school district. Charlie Hutchinson and myself. And, um, then on August thirty-one, we're going to be asking the townspeople to expand that, to approve the expansion of that board to five people and have the elections for those people happen at town meeting as usual. And in March, I mean, it is late February. And, um, we also are, at that point, there will be a financial agreement with the unified district on, on how the separation will occur. So we'll ask the town voters to approve that unified agreement. Really, the only, uh, thing about that is that the town, uh, will need to agree to take back its debt for building in Dunaisia some years ago. When, as a unified district, Athens and Grafton, as well as Westminster, are having to be responsible for that debt, will have to take what's remains of that debt back. And, uh, we don't have to if the voters don't agree, but that's what we're asking the voters to do. Then, uh, but because Cheryl Charles became a town board member, uh, she can no longer act as a board member of the unified board. Unified board really will just be, in short order, just be Athens and Grafton. But in the meantime, we need to appoint a, someone from Westminster, uh, to, uh, to finish serving her term until next July one. Elise Manning has consented to be appointed. The lawyers say that there is no law that defines who does the appointing. And so the lawyer suggested that you folks, the select board, uh, endorse, uh, have a motion to endorse, um, Elise Manning as a unified school board member from Westminster. And the remaining unified school board members will also, I think tomorrow night, have a similar motion and.
They would also have to accept the resignation of.
And accept the resignation of Cheryl Charles. The unified school.
Second.
Motion to appoint Elise Manning, a replacement, uh, for the unified school board has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Look for passes.
So then we do need another one to accept the resignation, correct?
She hasn't resigned yet.
I don't, I don't think, uh, I don't think you need to be.
Okay.
She can resign. She's, it's, plenty to resign peasants tomorrow night and, um, and she can do that on her.
Thank you.
Permission.
For all you do, too. And all you've done. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, McKinnon Road, land purchase from town proposal.
In your packet, you have quite a bag of information. Not sure of the date, slide. The town exchanged lands to make McKinnon Road, um, a better access for maintenance, plowing, um, et cetera. So the owner at the time of the, of the, uh, land that we wanted to exchange, uh, went into a, into an agreement and we did so. We have now a very plowable, maintainable corner. And they got the old road bed and they're actually using it for storage, et cetera. Worked out great. In that process, the town, um, accumulated some extra lands, uh, point one six acres, which is partially a pond and, um, and a lowlands. Um, I talked to Chuck, um, it is not usable for us. It works very well with, um, how the road is configured now. And we have a landowner that has a very small piece of land on the inside of the corner where this, uh, land would, would, would have, um, would have joined. And they're interested in purchasing it. So the big letter, that's a very big wording, which I tried to shrink for you, but couldn't. Is expressing the interest in the property, paying us, the town, one hundred dollars. They would completely take care of the professional land, land survey, draw up the new deeds, create the Moilar, record it with the town and to no expense to, to the town. Um, not in this agreement, um, the contractor slash, um, project manager for the job also agreed to help the town in, uh, alleviating a water problem that we've had. That is a substantial, uh, flow when it rains very hard that comes into the roadbed and, um, where we don't have the, the room to, to create a better flow, they do. They own the land. They can create this swale back off of the road and keep the water off of, of the corner, off of old, uh, off of McKinnon Road. So that's part of the agreement that they have, um, proposed to you. It, it, uh, it seems like a win-win, um, the liability from the pond, um, the, the lowlands that, uh, we really don't need or want. And it creates, um, a very, um, advantageous, um, sleuth way that we can maintain our water off of our, our town road.
Thank you, Russ. Discussion.
Have any comments at all?
Chuck?
And potentially we make this land big enough so they can build on it, so they can add the groundless?
It, it, it's a pre-existing, um, lot, so it, it is buildable. There are some strict restrictions on it because of the size. But that's not, um, that's not hindering their, their, their purpose. So, um, so yes, it is, I, I actually gave a permit, um, two, two and a half years ago to that piece of land and it all fits. Um, they just kind of backed out because it really wasn't what they were after and, but this, this pre-existing lot is in need of, of this extra buffer. And like we said, we, we'd love to get it back on the text. And like we said, we'd love to get it back on the tax roll and and get rid of the liability of the pond.
I move we sell the 0.6 acres.
0.16.
0.16, sorry. 0.16 acres, parcel number 0140. No, that's hers, okay.
And it does not have a parcel number?
No. For the price of $100 to Nora Daniel.
Motion has been made and seconded.
We should have had in the amendment that we that they were going to pay all the other expenses.
Yeah, you want to put that in here or you just want to, I can note it in the minutes. Do you want to put it in the motion?
Yeah, I'll revise the motion.
Thank you, sir.
That might cost more than $100, that's for sure.
So I move that the town sell 0.16 acres on McKinnon Road for the price of $100 to Nora Daniel, and that Nora Daniel pay the additional costs associated with survey and the deed.
So this transaction would cost the town $0?
Right. Okay, and so.
They're all closing costs or.
And all closing costs.
I think the tennis, we don't pay them.
Let's wait and see what Millie comes up with.
That's a transactional cost of time.
Thank you for all you're doing.
No, that's okay. Thank you. 1.6 acres McKinnon owed for $100 to Nora Daniel, and she will pay the additional cost of the survey and all closing costs and the deed, so that the transaction will cost the town nothing.
What, a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the manager's report.
A couple of brief things. Tax sale this year is, still has not been set, but it is going to be held mid to late August. We still have the 12 properties pending sale. There has been no movement on any of those 12 parcels. Number two, the few bid will be going out next week. I waited because the market was in such flex, it was expressed from our present carrier that our price would be extremely high if we had done it earlier, when I usually do it, which is beginning of June. So it will be typically sent out in June, but now it's going to be next week. Number three, our trash bid will be ending July 1st. We're not going to wait and find out that people are already booked, so I'm going to send out that invitation to bid late August, early September, for hopefully a three-year contract with a carrier for our trash. And just another reminder, our audit this year is July 28, 29, and 30.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Boards and commissions.
We have John Jones as as a adjustment to the agenda.
John Jones, for the record, I just wanted to kind of come back to the board and the town manager and the public. Since the appointment, I've had a chance to attend a couple of meetings with the Wyndham Regional Commission, just as a sit-in. One of the committees that I had an interest in, I think, is the Transportation Committee. One of the things they're forward-thinking, I'm going to follow this restructuring that committee, and I told them I'd bring it back to the cycle board and the town manager. They're looking for some more involvement, and they had wanted to know if our road coordinator would be interested in just starting participating in that, or our road commissioner. So I said I would bring it back. It's not going to take the place of the appointed commissioners, but they seem to have a shortfall in feedback from towns on transportation. We're moving next cycle to bridges, a lot of the bridge work. That's an interest to the road commander and the commissioner.
No, one more thing.
I think it's a good, it's a good way.
He's got a raise.
I think it's a professional way for our community to have another voice there, someone that's out there every day working on roads and saying, this is what I see. We're not always going to do a forecast item, and you folks are busy, you're professional affairs, and I said I'd bring it, and I brought it.
Terrific. Thank you. So you'll be in contact with Chuck?
Yep, I'll let him know when when the next public meeting.
Terrific.
The same way we're all doing right now, so.
Jason and I are still looking at, what is, what's a professional job?
I'm just trying to be professional.
I've been called worse, I'm good with it.
Thank you very much for that. Boards and commissions, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Any other business?
Can I just, just go first?
No, go ahead.
And I don't know how this fits in, maybe David can tell us more. It's pretty well-known fact, I think, that all special ed kids are being moved to Westminster Elementary School. No?
Not that I've heard.
I think a lot of the district's special education kids are going to be moved to the Westminster School this fall, and I'm just wondering how that impacts. Maybe it doesn't impact the school, or are, maybe it's all reimbursable? You're shaking your head so you know, I guess. I know because.
We have the expert.
I'm not the expert in that matter, but there has been a special room or area in the center school that is, that has housed not only kids in Westminster kids, but also other kids from the Supervisor Union who have extra needs. It's not all kids from the Supervisor Union, all.
I think there's a choice if if people know enough, it seems like there's a choice if you know enough to ask the district that your kid, if your child might be moved. But I know if you don't know that, your child could be moved and bused.
Yeah, and and I, because I have, the information I have is from when I was on the school, and I haven't been on the school board during this unified district. And what I know is that when we actually have control of our school, we will be able to, we will be making those decisions about whether, about whether we want to have our school open to do other kids from other parts of the Supervisor.
Unified Board, they'll be making that, those decisions.
No, the town, when we have, when the town school district actually is in effect, which will be next July 1 and afterwards, that those decisions will be made by the town school district.
I just wondered about expense and reimbursement and.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
So far as that is concerned, that that the, that is currently reimbursed by the Supervisor Union budget, not a town budget or a unified school district.
Thank you.
Any further issues or questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, other business?
Two other things. You have a request from our town clerk.
We need a motion to go in executive session.
I move to go in executive session and discuss it.
Motion. Motion has been moved to go in executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I, I just ask a quick question about, Ian asked earlier about a committee for the article funding, and it kind of was, yeah, we should do, we have a plan, like, how do people know that you're looking for people on this committee? When will this committee be formed? I don't think we can keep kicking this sand down the road too far because I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that there's a law, a thoughtful process what we're using this money for.
Our thought process was when we receive the money, then we now, then the details will be readily available, as John's saying, that he has information that I haven't received yet. So I don't think, ready to form a committee, but I think immediately, as soon as we see it, could be as soon as next meeting, it will be on the agenda. But I've been checking daily, and I haven't seen any more.
Ross, can we write maybe a little article on the, is that the one, you know, to just say that there's a possibility, so if you're interested in being on this committee?
Absolutely.
You could call so that we would have names of people who would be interested.
Deadline is next week, that's perfect timing.
Okay, so that they would know, then we.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think there's enough guidance out there right now to get the discussions started.
You know, six, seven people calling and said, we don't know, but we'd be interested in serving on it, at least it helps the board that we go to form where we have names of people who are interested in doing it.
Yes?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I forgot one thing under board admissions. Speaking of committees, there is a plan on the energy committee for Wyndham Regional, and there are outlines for towns to establish an energy committee. I will, once I can break that off, I'll bring it to you folks. And as one of the other committees, I signed up to participate in, so just you have all that information.
Thank you.
It's something they had, so I apologize for not.
No, one way.
On that note.
Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, be safe traveling.
Will there be any decisions coming out of the executive session? Yeah.
Yes.
I still have one thing on the business. I mean.
I did hear you say two.
Go ahead.
You did say two.
The next matter?
We have still a tax rate that has to be approved by you, and I don't have enough information right now to be comfortable to to help set the tax rate. So I'm meeting, I'm hoping tomorrow with Dimmerick to justify the decrease in our grand list that that our assessor is showing. I just want to make sure that it's correct. It just doesn't feel right. It, we've increased the town's values substantially this year with with permits and et cetera and carryover from last year, and we're still showing a significant decrease in overall assessed value. And I guess what put me over the top was we lost 14 taxable homestead parcels. We went from 895 to 881 in a year. And I I know of one fire that could possibly have been that. So anyway, I I'm just, I'm not comfortable yet, so.
Did we give up something to the state or something?
I'm sorry?
Did we give up something to the state?
No. The state has had some fluctuations, but nothing that would adjust to this point.
So you will work with.
Chris, Millie.
Chris.
Millie.
And then we will call a special meeting, correct?
Yes.
And you'll let us know when, you guys will let us know when you're ready.
Next week.
Okay.
Can I just say, are there parcels that were were surveyed together? Was there transfers of parcels that might be contiguous, that one became inactive and the other one?
We had one annexed parcel. We had one burn.
The burnt parcel, there's still a parcel there, though.
But it's, it could have changed from a homestead to land, and that would take it off of that item, is what I was told. So those are the only two that I I can justify out of the 14.
You came to us this last year with maybe four or five different parcels that we had to make corrections and move, but you haven't come with us.
That's errors and omissions, that's, honestly, that's just in value of.
Yeah, I was going to say, there was nothing that we made.
But again, it doesn't even come close to what we've lost in.
The whole time you were just saying that you thought the list would go up.
Yeah.
Forgiving board, availability for the special meeting would be Monday and/or Tuesday, you believe?
I surveyed everybody.
Okay.
Hope he can't make either one Monday or Tuesday, but I will let you know as soon as I know.
Do they have a form?
Hopefully it's tomorrow, yes. So the four of you are available.
Thank you.